Two weeks ago, after nineteen years of service, so Vanessa is joining us to help out with the department and help run the meeting. So, welcome Vanessa.
Welcome Vanessa. Can I get a report on the posting of the agenda, please?
Yes, Madam Chair, the agenda was posted and available for public access on the City Hall exterior bulletin board on the west side of the council chambers by nine o'clock PM on Thursday, October 5th, in accordance with the city's policies and procedures.
Can I get a motion to accept the agenda?
So moved.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That passes, okay. The next item is public comments, and this time has been set aside for members of the public to address the planning commission on consent calendar and other items, and items of general interest within our subject matter jurisdiction. Each person is entitled to three minutes. Testimony for the public hearings may be offered at this time or at the time of the hearing, and that's, the public hearing item is item two A. We have a matter of four A, which is Maryland, which is not a public hearing item, but we will take testimony tonight, either at this time, or when we call the item at second on the agenda. So if you prefer to wait and testify after the staff report, we will take your testimony at that time. But you can only testify once, in case anybody's really adamant and wants to testify twice. Okay, are there any members of the public who would like to testify? Please come up.
I want to thank the commission for letting me speak. My name is Russell Monroe. I'm a resident of Maryland on Taylor Drive. I wanted to address the upcoming approval of an addendum to the design for the multifamily units, parcel one at Maryland. It's listed as a minor upgrade. It feels to us that it is a major revision of the original plan that was presented to the homeowners and the prospective home buyers. At Maryland, there are about a hundred houses that surround this project right now. The project was originally one and two-story buildings with significant green space. This has been changed to all two stories and basically a block wall down all the sides. Unique to this is that the reverse, the backside elevations are what the community sees. This is basically all facing inward, so the community only sees the backside elevations of these houses, which right now appear to be a solid block wall with no greenery, no landscaping. It's also pushed up right against the easement. That's a particular problem for some residents such as on Brando and Nugget Lane, who basically have lost their sightlines. There was originally sightlines for the pathway there, and now it is obscured by the townhouses. Thank you very much.
The next speaker is Bruce Younger.
My name is Bruce Younger. I reside at thirty-seven eleven Ambassador Drive within the Maryland development, and I'm here to speak on agenda item four A. I was shocked to discover this item was on the agenda for today's meeting, as I have never received a mail notification on this submission. And when the agenda was posted on Friday, there was no link provided to view the detailed attachment. I called the city planner on this and was told that there was no mailing, as this was not a public hearing, and it's only a minor modification to an already approved plan. I am in adamantly disagreement with this as anything that could be considered a minor change. It is a completely different design from what has been previously approved. The revised plan looks nothing like the original approved plan. It is significantly different in layout, composition, and architecture. To call this a modification is completely disingenuous. The approved plan was for mixed one and two-story detached multifamily homes, and now the revised plan is for two-story attached multifamily duplexes. This creates an entirely different project. The internal streets separating buildings have been removed from the original plan, along with access pass to the surrounding olive groves. Building masses have been increased, and if that isn't bad enough, the applicant is requesting a variance from the fifteen-foot separation to a ten-foot separation between buildings. The buildings have all been pushed to the outer perimeter of the site towards the community, open space, and adjoining neighbors. This would create a hideous wall of structures bringing the site. Please note, the applicant did not provide any visual renderings of the project's appearance from the surrounding public area and homes. I believe this was on purpose because the architecture is simply terrible, and it, and the renderings would demonstrate how ugly this structure would appear to everyone. The particular site, this particular site has always been shown in marketing materials distributed by the developer as, quote, "future detached multifamily housing," unquote. That is not what is presented before you today. I urge you to please deny this application in its entirety, and for the sake of our many surrounding homeowners, and for the overall preservation of architectural standards within the city. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Craig Madsen, followed by Brian Monahan.
Good evening. Thank you for the time. My name is Craig Madsen. My wife Cindy and I live in Maryland at thirty-five thirteen Ambassador. I want to echo what the other two have said. We adamantly disagree and oppose the change to these plans. The way we first saw the plans, there was a mixture of one and two-story homes, which mirrors what's on the east and west side, east and west side of the development. We live in a flair on the east side on Ambassador. On the west side is also flair homes on Taylor. Those are both one and two stories. We feel that the original plan with one and two stories would blend in well with the, with the aesthetics of the area. And now that they're all two-story, or the proposal is to have all two-story, we don't think that would be a good match. Looking at it from our perspective, looking west, we will just see twenty-four feet of cement stucco structures in front of us. And also on the west side looking east, that's what they will see. And actually, all around that, that's all people will see, the residents, current residents will see, is just a twenty-four-foot tall expanse of cement with some windows. Can I ask a question to clarify? Is there going to be a fence or a wall on the perimeter? Looking at the plan, it appears that there's a fence, and each individual home will have a block wall in between. So will there be a fence on the perimeter, or will it be a block wall?
We don't answer questions in public testimony. That may came, that may be a question we ask of the staff and the applicant.
Okay. In addition to this, there's going to be four more homes. And from what my wife and I, when we moved to Palm Springs and looked around at different developments, we looked at some that were all two-story homes in a very confined space with minimal space in between the homes, and it looked like we were in a penitentiary grounds. They're very tall, narrow streets, and I feel that, and we feel that, with just having two-story homes in this, and additional four homes in this, it's going to look much that's, just have that same look. Not a residential look, but more of a industrial complex. I don't think it's fitting with the aesthetics of our neighborhood. So, request that you deny the application. Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing me to speak to you tonight. My name is Brian Monahan. I live at thirty-three eleven Ambassador Drive in Maryland. I'm one of the flair homes. I'm not going to say everything that everyone else says because it's said, because we all feel the same. I just want to, my point is, I honestly don't feel this is just a simple amendment to what we were originally shown for this, and that's my big concern. We all knew what this was going to be originally, and we liked the one and two-story design of it, and much more green space. And I just feel this is something that we need to look at again, because we're just going to be facing these giant walls. With the houses pushed closer together from fifteen feet to ten feet, in ten feet, you can't even put a tree between the houses. And also, what is the back going to be? Is it a fence? Is it a wall? Are we going to look at a wall, and then a wall, twenty-four feet high of house? So that's my big concern, and also that I just feel that this is, at this point, being rushed through as a simple amendment, and I honestly don't think it is. And I, I hope you will reject this and take the time to look at it again. Thank you very much.
The next speaker is Lynn Calladine.
I'd like to speak.
If you get the time. Madam Chair, that's everyone who's signed up so far. If there's anyone else who wants to speak now, or you can wait until the item is called. We do have some speakers online, however.
Thank you. The public hearing, do any of the speakers online have they wanted to speak now?
Yes, I'll go to John Gouchet. If you can unmute yourself, you have three minutes.
Thank you. It's a goutcher. My husband and I live on Fountain Drive in Maryland, and I, we're concerned for the, for very similar reasons that have already been brought up. In 2021, I emailed with Edward Robinson asking about the preliminary plans that had been, I guess preliminarily approved, at which time he said those plans were not approved, and that, and I quote, "The residents of Maryland and surrounding community within a five-hundred-foot radius of the site will be notified whenever an application is processed for the parcel." The agenda today at this meeting indicates that an updated plan has been submitted. That tells me that a, a plan was already approved, where Mr. Robertson indicated that we would receive notification before the design was approved. I never received such notification, and to my knowledge, none of my neighbors has either. Nor did I receive any notification that the approved design was being amended and now up for approval again. I urge you to pause this process until all affected residents can be appropriately notified, as Mr. Roberts had indicated to me in 2021. We would also appreciate the opportunity to see the proposed originally approved plans and to comment on those as neighbors who will be impacted. Thank you for your time.
There are several other members of the public on the Zoom call. If any of you would like to speak on this item now, or any of the items during public comment, please raise your hand, and I will call on you. I see no other speakers, Madam Chair.
Thank you. The public hearing is closed. Moving on to the consent calendar, item one A is the approval of the minutes of September thirteenth, 2023. And what I wanted to call your attention to is that this is the first time we'll be getting action minutes, which means that we will not be, the minutes will not contain quotes of, of points that you made during the hearings, but merely a summary of what action the council took that's in line with the kind of minutes that are produced for city council, and we're just aligning ourselves to that practice. So, we may get a set of minutes prior to September thirteenth that is in the old format, but nothing going forward will be. Is there a motion on this?
I'll move approval of the September thirteenth minutes.
I'll, I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That passes. Okay, we're at public hearing. The first is a request by William Holland for a conditional use permit for cannabis cultivation and manufacturing operation within an existing building at three-three oh-one Micro Place, Zone M one P. I just want to mention, since we have some new members on the commission, that this is the format we will take for cannabis grows. They are now restricted to the northern edge of the city, near the Ten Freeway. There's a permit and odor requirement. We generally get a report both from the odor consultant and all We generally get a report both from the odor consultant and also from the department that handles cannabis permits. And I just wanted, I wanted you to know that this is how you can expect to see these in the future. Staff report, please.
Good evening, Chair and Commissioners. I am waiting for my PowerPoint to pop up. The applicant is requesting approval of a cultivation facility at 3301 Micro Place. In addition to the cultivation aspect of this facility, the other uses include manufacturing, dispensary, and lounge, which are all permitted use by right and do not require a conditional use permit. The type P cannabis cultivation facility sits on a site, an existing site that's already developed. The site area is approximately 36,000 square feet. The facility size, again, an existing building, is approximately 9,000 square feet, two stories. The zone is M1P, which is permitted with a conditional use permit and sits within the cannabis overlay zone. And the odor control plan was reviewed and approved by the city's odor control consultant, So as mentioned, this is the subject site outlined in yellow. It does sit in the north of the city in the cannabis overlay zone. There are no other uses immediately adjacent to the site. In fact, the closest use is to the east, which I believe is in Desert Hot Springs, and that is a cannabis dispensary as well as a gas station. So you could see it, I can't point with this, but you could see it up there on the east. The proposed facility is located within an existing building on a fully developed site that was previously used as College of the Desert Energy Campus, but it now has been vacant. The, sorry, as previously mentioned, the project site is two-story. It contains a paved parking lot with sufficient parking, that is, I'm sorry, with sufficient parking for this proposed use and perimeter fencing slash wall. No exterior changes to the building or the site are proposed at this time. However, if the applicant chooses to modify the exterior, they will need to go through an architectural review process. This is what the site currently looks like. The building is fairly new. Its year built was in 2008. And this is the surrounding elevation. The interior floor plan, on the left, you have the first floor with the grow rooms, vegetation room, dry and trim room, and the distribution slash manufacturing area. On the right will consist of the second story, which is where the lounge, dispensary, and ancillary office and restrooms will be located. These are the existing elevations of the building. The project has been reviewed and approved by the city's odor control consultant. Some key features of the odor control plan include air-moving equipment throughout the building, 100% air discharge to the exterior shall be diluted, record-keeping of inspections as per the number of plants under the grow lights need to be just regularly monitored as far as the staff training procedures as well, just to keep all the doors shut and the daily logs and the odor mitigation devices actually operating as they should. Additionally, in our condition of approval in the report, we've addressed odor as well to make sure that if there's any issues with the odor, they can be properly resolved before we go through like the conditional use permit revocation process. For the conditional use permit, there are five findings that need to be made. As you can see, the findings within the report, they've all, they've been all addressed and have been made with staff satisfaction. Overall, this project conforms to separation distance requirements from protected uses and other criteria for cannabis users such as the parks and school districts. So this is well situated far enough away from those protected uses. It does conform to all the criteria needed for approval of a conditional use permit. It is located in an appropriate area, that being the cannabis overlay zone. And the applicant is currently in the process, so they've already received their local cannabis permit, and they're in the process of obtaining their state permit. So that'll, that'll be addressed prior to operating. So with that said, staff does recommend this conditional use permit approval subject to the attached conditions of approval. That concludes my presentation. The applicant, sorry, the applicant, the city's odor control consultant and the applicant's odor consultant are here and available to answer any questions.
Would the commission prefer to hear from the odor control consultant before we take questions of staff? If you're here, if he's here.
I am here, yes. Matt with 15,000.
Oh, the city's odor control consultant.
Hi, this is Matt with 15,000 on the line. Is there a particular question or item within the odor control plan you'd like me to address?
I'd like you just to address the plan and explain it to the commission. Thank you.
From what I found, the odor control plan that was submitted to us meets all the requirements that have been set forth by the City of Palm Springs. The envelope on the interior is to be updated with the latest insulation requirements for the building, which should further help limit any sort of nuisance odors traveling and any sort of cracks or crevices. The plan calls to seal the entire building to make sure that there are doors that have low loss that meet all of the California Green Building standard requirements for CFM loss. The plan itself does show that there are four, there are four, my apologies, I'm dealing with my kids here at the moment, too. There's four plume discharge air fans, so they've got dilution or mixing boxes at the roof level. So once the air is filtered within the building, it goes into a mixing box where there's seven parts fresh air to one part exhaust air. They go through and mix, and then they're discharged. The fans usually have an outlet velocity of around 3,000 feet per minute, so has a very nice stack or plume height to it so that we don't get odors that settle down to the ground if they are present. The report itself did indicate the proper pressure relationship as well, so we've got empty rooms, meaning corridors and things of that nature, that'll act as negative pressure zones to further limit any sort of nuisance odors that might be pushed out of the building. From what we saw, there is a robust narrative for staff procedures to deal with any sort of nuisance odors that they may come across, and they have also demonstrated that their ability to record-keep and maintain the equipment as outlined within the odor mitigation requirement.
Thank you. Are there any questions? And is the city's, is Veronica here? I have a question for Veronica. Does anyone else? Mine is, generally, when we get projects like this, we're also getting a request for rehabilitation, so we're getting other permits. In this case, the only thing we've received is a CUP. And the question is, when does your permit kick in? Does your, it looks like your permit kicks in before the odor control work is done?
Correct. When we issue our initial permit, it's a conditioned cannabis permit, so it only allows for them to go through the processes to obtain their annual cannabis permit. So when they apply, once the odor control plan is approved and the land use is approved, we issue a conditional permit which allows the applicant to start the state licensing process as well as the processes with the city such as the CUP.
And does your conditional permit become permanent at the time that they get the certificate of occupancy and have completed the repairs?
Correct. So we will issue our annual permit. Once we receive the certificate of occupancy, they have to obtain a business license, and there's some other steps that are required from our department just to ensure that they are prepared to be operable.
So if we condition this, I think, on getting, and they're also, the CFO and also receiving your annual permit, is that a condition that works with your department?
Yes, we can make that work.
Okay, any other questions? Thank you so much for coming tonight. Is the applicant here? I'm opening the public hearing. You have three minutes. Actually, you have 10 minutes. Hello.
How you doing? I'm Corey Holland, Willie Holland's brother. He owns Holland Farms Dispensary downtown. This project is special to me because I started growing cannabis maybe like five years ago, and it has just pretty much taken over my life, taking care of plants and being in that environment. It just makes me happy, and this project means so much to me. So I'd like to thank you guys for even just approving the odor control and letting me have this opportunity.
Is there any other member of the public who wishes to speak? Seeing none, I'm going to come back to you. And are there any questions for the applicant? I have one. We standardly have asked, it's not in these conditions, but we've asked that there be a bike rack at the facility in case any of your employees wish to bicycle.
We don't have any current bike racks now, but that's something that we can add.
It's something that you would be willing to add?
Yes, for sure.
I know it's a distance out, but hopefully there's some brave souls who don't want to drive cars to work, so.
Right.
Okay, no other questions for the applicant? It's a great project.
Thank you, thank you.
The matter is before the commission? Any comments? I have one then, which is, it's a great project. I want to make a motion to approve, and I wanted to add two things to it. To appeal in five, I just want to add language to the effect that, I think it says, Chris, you might want to help me, CFO and the city's annual cannabis permit. So the words, and annual cannabis permit.
So we would say, the applicant shall be required to implement all recommendations of the city's consultant prior to issuance of certificate of occupancy and annual cannabis permit.
Correct. And then the other would be that the applicant will install a bike rack for employees. Is there a second to this motion?
I'll second.
Are there any comments? Seeing none, can you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Baker is excused. Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Murphy?
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts is excused. Commissioner Rotman?
Yes.
And Chair Wermick?
Yes.
Thank you, and congratulations. Okay. The next item is new business, and it is item 4A, and it's a request by PLC Communities to amend a previously approved final development plan for 153-unit multifamily residential development to include an increase of residential units to 157 and minor changes to the site plan within Phase 1 of the Planning Area 5 at the Maryland Development located at 801 North Sunrise Way. Can we have a staff report, please?
Yes. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the Planning Commission. Before I delve into the staff report, while the Control Room is trying to correct the technical, yeah, okay, because this is not showing, it's not projecting on our monitor, so I may have to go to the monitor to complete my presentation. But before then, Madam Chair, I just want to correct a couple items from what was said during the public comments period. Number one, we staff determined that this proposal is a minor application, it's a minor amendment for these reasons. Number one, the intent of the project hasn't changed. It was approved as a multifamily residential, and that is what it remains. It is also within the allowable density, so the reconfiguration to the site plan is what we're going to be reviewing tonight. And most importantly, the site plan remains the same. It is still within the Planning Area 5 as you originally approved it. There are two differences in this proposal anyway. So when it was approved as a final PD, it was for 153 units. Tonight, they are asking to increase the number of units to 157, 157 units, it's still within the allowable density. The overall acreage of the site is 16.8 acres, well enough to occupy or to contain the development. So again, what you have before you tonight is the site plan. The architectural details and the landscaping will go back to the RC based on your recommendation or your actions tonight. So if I can just walk to the monitor, because my eyes are not good enough to see them from here. So, Madam Chair, one of the comments made earlier regarding notification, first of all, this application was submitted in 2023, in April of 2023. The general man that spoke earlier was actually referring to Planning Area 12, where you reviewed the, in studying session a couple months ago. So there are two different projects. So again, what you have tonight is a minor modification. We determined that it was a minor modification, again, because the original intent of the project remains. And what you have has to abide by the R3 development standard, not specific, not specific ground development district standards. And again, it will be subject to the design guidelines of the Maryland project that you approved in 2016. The scope of tonight's review will be limited to the site plan layout itself, access and circulation within the subject parcel that was recorded when the project was approved in 2004. Again, it has to be consistent with the R3 development standard to include the massing, height, and coverage consistently with the Maryland Design Guidelines and Landscape Guidelines. Tonight, we'll be asking for action from you, either to approve as submitted or give us directions, give staff and the applicant directions on what to revise and be brought back to you. This is just a minor, this had the background of the applications. There will be no deviation from the project itself. The original intent of multifamily residential will remain the same and within the density. However, there are changes to the site plan, as I mentioned earlier. There will be a change to the unit count going from 153 to 157. The unit sizes will be attached duplexes, which will, the sizes will range from 1,125 to 1,176 square foot. The detached units will range from 1,940 to 1,940. 1,176 square foot. The detached units will range from 1,940 to 2,475 square foot. Now there is one change that has been required or that has been requested of the Planning Commission. The R3 code requires a 15-foot separation between buildings. The applicant has asked for a reduction of 5 feet to make it 10 instead of 15 to allow for the increased density that was asked for. In this plan, there will be four types designated as Plan 1, Plan 2, Plan 3, and Plan 4. For the mass and scale, as I mentioned earlier, they will all be two stories with a maximum height of 24 feet as approved or as required in the R3 development standards. All the units will have private patios and two garage, two car garages. This is the overall site plan of Miralong. So if you recall, this is the area in question. As I mentioned earlier, this is, this is Planning Area P12. That was the one that came before you in a study session a couple months ago. This is the area we're talking about tonight. Here is the recreation area for the Miralong Development. So here, I put side by side the existing site plan that you approved in final development plan. To the left of the screen is the existing site plan, and to the right is the revised site plan. It is true that changes were made to this site plan in terms of the street layout, the orientation of the homes, the access into the, or the connection into the open space areas. So to the existing site plan, as you can see, yeah, so you have connections to the north and to the west and east of the site and also to the south. There are several points of connection to the open space, including in the upper side of the site plan and at the lower end. And also, at the southern part of the existing site plan, there is a small recreation, a small park that is there. However, in the revised site plan, those have been changed again. So there are three points of access into the open space area, one on the west side of it, at the midsection of the site, and one on the east side, and one on the, on the south, south side of the site plan. One other change that is very noticeable is the fact that the park, the park, the small parklet that was on the south part of the site has been removed. And in its place, there are parking spaces there. So that's another change to the site plan. And of course, there are also changes to the, to the orientation of homes. So one question that was raised earlier is whether there will be walls surrounding the property or not. There will be view fences surrounding the property.
Can you repeat that? You said that there would be fencing, this-
View fence, view fences?
The same as on the other side?
Correct.
A small, a five-foot see-through-
Correct.
-metal fence?
Correct.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Again, this is just the overall revised site plan. I know that this is not before you tonight, but I just wanted to show how the buildings will look like on the motor court area and on the internal motor court areas and the perimeter buildings. And again, this are just the renderings of the street views within the development. And this is another perspective views of the interior and the swimming pool area will look like. Here is another interior of the development. And again, as I mentioned, there will be three different types of buildings. So this is Building 1. And this is the first floor plan for that building, the second floor. And this are just the sections and the heights of the buildings. This is just a 3D rendering of Building 1. So, Madam Chair, in conclusion, I want to reiterate that, for the most part, this amendment does conform to the R3 development standard with the exception of the building separation distance that the applicant is requesting for a reduction from 15 feet to 10 feet. This density is still consistent with the general plan, and the unit count is consistent with the settlement agreement that was agreed upon when the Miralong Development was approved in 2004. That will conclude my staff report.
Thank you. Questions of staff?
When this was originally approved, were there also unit sizes listed? And were there sort of schematic elevations of the units?
For the original approval?
For the original approval.
Correct, yeah, but I do not have them yet tonight.
Okay, all right. And then, I don't know if this is the right time or not, but there was some housekeeping I had on the conditions that were listed in here, and I can do that later or now. Okay.
Okay.
I think if it gets to the point of a motion, we can take that clean up.
All right.
Other questions? Yes, I'm sorry, Commissioner Murphy and then Commissioner Miller.
I have a question about the, the new, the four new units that are being added. I'm assuming that the reduction in green space, the 10-feet versus 15-feet separation, the elimination of that little parklet for parking, are any of those developments, are they a result of the, of an increase in the square footage of the four additional units? In other words, are we, is this application building maybe larger units than were originally intended and taking away the outside space, the space between the units, the green space? It wasn't clear reading through this.
Yeah, one of the reasons that the applicant, I can let him speak to that when it comes up to the podium, but one of the reasons, some of the changes within this site plan are the circulation system. They are wider than the original, than the existing site plan. They increased the drive widths, the, all the other easements and the main boulevard. The size of the main boulevard was also increased from the original approval. So those are some of the reasons. That's just two of them. I'm sure he will talk more about that when it comes up to the podium.
Thank you.
Commissioner Miller?
Yeah, Mr. Robertson actually answered one thing regarding the street width because that did increase as a requirement of a city code, correct, or a city requirement for fire?
Correct.
Yeah. The other thing that appears to be different in the site plans is, and correct me if I'm wrong, looking at the 2019 approved final plan, it didn't show a community swimming pool, whereas this plan shows a relatively large community swimming pool. Is that correct?
That is correct. And I recall, I can recall if Madam Chair was on the commission when this first came in 2019. That was one of the items, there were two items that the commission at that time had asked for. Number one, an increase in density. And number two, a recreation area for the multifamily development, even though the applicant at that time made an argument that the recreation area is only, is within a walking distance of this multifamily development. So the current applicant, however, decided to add a recreation area to, to the revised plan. So it is right here. We had asked that it be placed within the middle so that it would be within a walking distance of all the occupants. It's located right here.
Okay, thank you.
My question is probably for the Planning Director. We have an approved plan on this, correct? So we, we are being asked to make changes, but we're not obligated to make changes?
Correct. We have an approved final development plan.
Right.
So the applicant is requesting modifications to that, which, you know, for the series of technicalities that we spoke about, we've determined are minor. It is ultimately, we decided to refer it to the Planning Commission, given that we understood there would be sensitivity from the public. It could have been approved administratively, but we wanted your eyes and expertise on it, which is the reason that it's before you tonight. But you do have, as the Planning Commission, the ability to, you know, not accept the changes, not determine that they're minor, not accept them. You can send it back for changes with direction or deny it.
Thank you. And then, the, what I'm looking at is 16, because I know that access points in the small park and the flow of it, looking at this from the various neighborhoods that would surround it, really informed the plan that came to us previously. And it looks like 16 access points have been reduced to three. Am I correct?
That's correct, Madam Chair. And so if I can go back to the, to the exhibit, here there are, there are different points of access into the open space areas on each side and to the southern part of the-
And then each of the homes, as I recall, that was on the perimeter near the open, the community open space, was to have a gate in their yard. Does the new plan have a gate in every yard?
The applicant is proposing to have private gates into the open space areas as well.
They, they are planning to have that. And which streets had to be broadened and how much? And can you show us that on the plan?
Yes. I do not have an exhibit of the preliminary grading plans, but it is the two major streets. So they now are consistent with the city standards. And of course, the driveways areas leading into the homes. And then the major boulevard is also slightly wider than the previous or than the existing site plan.
Okay, I think that is my question. Are there any more coming from the commission? I'm going to, at this point, open the public hearing. Is the applicant here? You have 10 minutes to present, and then members of the public have three minutes each. And then you'll, we have some time for rebuttal.
Would you like to have the members of the public speak first, so in case they bring up something?
No, no, no.
Okay.
You'll come back. We'll get to ask you questions.
Perfect. Okay. Thank you very much, Madam Chair, Commissioners. My name is Patrick McCabe. I'm Vice President Forward Planning for PLC Communities. This is not my first time here. On this project, it is, but if some of the homeowners here live in the Aura Community down in Miralong, I'm responsible for that project as well. So this isn't our first rodeo here in Palm Springs or in Miralong. So just wanted to address a few things, especially that have come up here. You know, looking at the original site plan, if you take the site plan and you put it in front of any builder or any architect, they're going to say, we can do it better. You know, we can do it our way. They're going to change things. And the first thing we looked at were, you know, one, comparing the product, the existing product to the market and trying to understand how it fit in, trying to fit into Miralong, and plus putting our own spin on it. And additionally, you know, we look at particularly a lot of the comments that came out through the original approval. And you can see some of them implemented in here, such as the pool, such as the wider Paseo down there. But these are things that on original, the original design, the original intent that we took, we took it very seriously, the comments that the commission made previously. And we wanted to implement as much as we could. In that process, we came up with this plan here. So a few things, just to kind of clarify, you know, we, you know, there's a discussion about density, you know, yes, we're adding four units to the project here, to this particular site. But Miralong was approved with three, a total of 398 allowable units for the multifamily on both the two sites. We're going to be using up 157 of those. So even though we're asking for four more, it's actually coming out of the total of Miralong. So there's not an increase in the total number of multifamily units at Miralong. So I just wanted to make that clear. Second, probably, you know, most pertinent was this, the reduction in the building to building separation. As you know, on single-family housing, the side, side-to-side separation is 10 feet, the requirement is 10 feet. In a multifamily or in the R3-type zoning, what happens a lot, or what's allowable in R3, not particularly Miralong, is that you end up with larger buildings, such as apartment buildings, larger multifamily buildings that are one, you know, one building that housed 10 units or 15 units or so. This was something that we didn't want to see at Miralong. We didn't want to see a larger building. You can see, you know, the buildings are separated in two, but down each little alley down the middle, there's two sets of two buildings. And it could easily have been a fourplex there, which would have helped that situation, causing more, you know, giving more, call it green space from side to side, or desert landscaping from side to side. What we did was we wanted it to feel a little more like the single-family condition, and we separated them out to be duplexes. So that was a part of the reasoning behind, you know, that. But in that process, as we were developing the plans, developing the site, you know, we ended up in a condition where, you know, we obviously want to pile, you know, 10 pounds into a five-pound sack. And that's, that's what we were coming up against. And so we asked, we were asking for that reduction in that side. But again, you know, what we're trying to accomplish is we're trying to accomplish smaller buildings with that 10-foot setback or side-to-side building separation versus the 15. So that, that was the, kind of the thought behind that part of it, too. The other issue that was brought up, two stories, as Edward has mentioned, that multifamily is allowable to be two-story. There are restrictions in Miralong, though, of how much of that second story can cover the first story. And it's a 50%. In all of our cases, the second story is less than 50% of the first floor footprint. And you can see that when he cycled through the, the building footprints real quick, you saw that there, it was a smaller portion on top. But what you also can see on that, let's see if it can come up here. You can see that, that footprint of the second story is pushed back from the rear of the house. So it's oriented closer to the internal part of our property. And that was, you know, one condition to help with that 10-foot building separation, the back-to-back condition, so you don't have second stories looking down into the yard space of the other building or their own house. And then also along the perimeter, too, it adds an additional buffer. It adds elevation, you know, undulence or variation. So it just causes for it, just a different and kind of a, a better-looking elevation than a typical box that you see or a, an elevation where the second story is fully to the front or fully to the back. So we did try to take those considerations in mind. We made sure that we were mindful about that as we were planning. Next, it was also mentioned that, you know, there were things such as the street width that did come up as we were talking with traffic and fire. And there are conditions where there are 20-foot drive aisles in Palm Springs. We felt that was a little tight. Fire actually had a concern about that as well. When you start putting their turning radiuses in and trying to make sure you have maneuverability and accessibility, it became something where we felt that moving to a, to a 25-foot street width across all of the streets really was a safety and prudent move that way. There was also an initial comment from staff that had mentioned the concern about the alleys and having a canyon effect if those homes were too close together. So adding that additional couple feet to the width of the alley really helps just spread those apart a little bit. So again, kind of, you know, twofold mandatory, you know, safety issues, and then also just from an aesthetic standpoint, it does do better. Finally, you know, as we were adding these things, it was mentioned that, you know, we're losing, you know, an amount of green space. And Edward had brought up the little parklet at the bottom. But, you know, as was mentioned, we are adding the community pool. I know that was something that was asked for several times throughout the previous processes. And we heard that not only loud and clear, but we also feel like it's prudent here. The original plan or the original intent was that there could be pools in the backyards of some of the previous planned units. But if you really look at it, it's really limited. And that's what we saw as well, that yes, certain, certain homes could get it, but not all the homes. So we felt prudent that, one, we didn't want to overload the master plan pool. And then we also felt that it would be prudent for these, these homeowners to have a separate pool to share among themselves. Finally, you know, the Paseo, again, there was a suggestion- Finally, you know, the Paseo, again, there was a suggestion that we add more width to the Paseo. One, to spread the buildings apart. That's really what we did there. We have an average width there of, I believe it was 45 feet, you know, between those two buildings along the whole Paseo. There's some, some areas that are 55, and there's some, I think, are 35. So we do have a very large space in there. And that's really to, you know, address, you know, walking, people walking their dogs, people enjoying their, you know, their walks, whatever it is. That's, that's definitely there. There's some shade structures. There's trees. We, we really wanted to make sure that that was a space that could be utilized by the homeowners there. As it relates to the access along the perimeter of the site, we did narrow it down only to three points of access. A lot of that has to do with, you know, really, how many do you actually need to access that? There really isn't a sidewalk or anything leading from the edge of the site to the cart path. So you're going to be walking across landscaped, you know, open space to get to the cart path. So we narrowed it down to three formal access points that will have a sidewalk leading directly to the cart path. So that was something that we felt was important, to do that instead of traversing across, you know, potential landscape or, or other. If you really look at the overall community, the surrounding homes, single-family homes around the whole perimeter of the site, there's only three access points there. And you have to walk a long way to get to one of those access points, depending on where you are. On the west side of the property, there's actually zero access points. So, you know, to, to sit there and say, this, this, this project potentially needs to have more, well, that's not in keeping or not really implemented in the rest of the site. And so we feel we, we put in formal, you know, access points that really, you know, makes sense as to where they're located halfway down the site, at the base of the site, so people can get in and out and access the property as needed. So. And then finally, yes, the, we had talked about the view fence along the exterior. So it will be a wrought iron view fence, the same as the single-family houses across the way. So that, you know, people looking out will see a landscaped backyard from there. Instead of, you know, what was previously done, that was a side yard in those conditions. And whether or not that was going to be view fencing on a side yard or a block wall, I'm not sure exactly what that was. But we felt that, you know, nobody ever wants to see the side of a house, particularly when what people normally store on the, on the sides of their houses. You don't really want that to be viewable from the open space and from the houses across. So there's some, a lot of thought put into this, basically, to, to do that. The extra four units were really a, you know, function of, you know, the efficiency of the project as we laid it out. We happened to have four more units in it as we laid it out this way. One last point, you know, in terms of things we've, we've given to the project, you know, on multifamily projects, the first, first complaint we have, probably right before we get the complaints about dog poop everywhere, is parking. You know, too many cars, too many parking, not enough guest parking. Here, we're providing 50 extra spaces than required. So you see that extra parking there. But we feel between that, between the driveways, between the garages, it's really prudent, because those are the types of things that people really complain about when things start, start, you know, when people start living there. You know, the last thing we want is for people to be parking outside of this community and onto the streets as a single family. And that's something we're very concerned about. It happens all the time. So we wanted to make sure we provided that parking within the plan and exceeded the, the basic requirements for parking. So with that being said, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Not at this point. We'll call, but stay. We'll call you back.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Are there members of the public that wish to speak?
Lynn Callardine.
Good afternoon, members of the commission. My name is Lynn Callardine, and I formerly sat up there for about seven years. And we did, at that time, we went through some of the original additions of this project and the Maryland project itself. I want to congratulate the new commissioners, because I know it's a lot of hard work that you have to go through. I want to focus my comments today on the pedestrian access points. I think that's a real, the one big disadvantage that I see in the revised plan, one of the, at least. The original plan was tightly integrated with the open space. If you look at the, compare the two side by side, the original plan shows, shows the open space grove encircling the project, or at least on three sides. The revised plan doesn't even show the open space. It just has blank white there. And while that may not, that just may be a technical drawing thing, it's somewhat symbolic of how, the way I think this, this plan has evolved. The original plan was tightly integrated with project. If you were walking your dog, you had many options to walk around the community and get into, actually use and to see the open space. Also, the, I think it was 16 total points. We didn't have a final landscape plan, but that provided potentially 16 different viewpoints from this dense, from the inside of this dense project into that, the Maryland open space area. And to say, when we go down to three, and it wasn't even clear from the, when I was reading the site plan, that there were three, there were three flood control easements shown, but not three open space connections. I, I think that's what's the intent, though, is to make those open space connections. I think that's not as good a plan as we had originally in that one aspect. Now, there are other aspects of this site that I think are improvement, particularly shifting the outboard units to have their backyards facing the open space. That ethic is a good thing, rather than just being side on. I think that'll improve the look from the, of the, of this site from the outset. But in, in, in summary, the city is really pushing, as part of our general plan process and as part of our overall process, to increase pedestrian access, to encourage alternatives to the automobile, and to really have people relate to the, be able to relate to the open space in this area. And I think with this change, down from 16 down to three access points, is, is, is one that makes the project worse. I'm not sure it has to be 16. I would, if I were on the commission, and of course, it's up to you. But if I were on the commission, I would, I would certainly want to see, you know, six, seven, eight, nine, somewhere in that area. But the loss of, just getting down to the three major points, I think is substantially, substantial detriment to this plan. And thank you very much for your time. I don't know, I don't know, do we get, do you get to ask me questions? I forget. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. So nice to see you again. Are there members of the public that wish to speak? If you've spoke before, you can't, we won't invite you back up. Are there members on Zoom?
There are still members on the Zoom call who did not speak previously. If you would like to speak, please raise your hand or unmute yourself to speak. Okay, John Kluchka. You have three minutes.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Sorry, I'm a little nervous about, because I've got a bunch of questions. So the key questions I've got are, what are the likelihood that the unit count won't go up again later? It seems like a new builder could change that at a later time. And any commitments that are made to say that this count could be okay, could then be changed again later? So I'm concerned that commitments previous are being, are not being upheld and that this potentially could be a pattern of more units just coming in. I was curious what the big or blank lots on the north side of the plan were? And what happens if they come back and ask to change those to be more high-density units? From my view of the plan, which isn't a professional, it looks like it's just blank lots. So I'm curious what those are supposed to be or what they could be. Next is what percentage of green space is now proposed versus the original? What's the percentage of change? Next is what is the overall massing change from previous? How, what percentage of massing is going to be changing here? Next, I'm not sure I understand how staff can be allowed to consider a change from 15 feet to 10 feet, which would technically, or in other places, be considered a zoning variance? How that could be considered minor? So more of a procedural question there. Next is, what's to stop the builder from changing the two-story massing plan that they described here as only 50%? Or as was done on Palladium, where lots and lots of two-story homes are now built out where they were not intended to be previously? I'm not sure if that would ever come back to planning commission, because it might be a minor change, quote unquote. So again, these minor changes are concerning to me, if you're not seeing them. Next is what is the percentage difference of building distance reduction? It sounds like it's a 33% reduction in building distances, and that seems like a lot as a resident of, of Maryland. What is the percentage difference of the overall massing that's being proposed? It seems like that could be significant. And then last one, what's the ratio of people to access? And maybe there's also a secondary question that is, what's the ratio of people to access excluding those who already have a private access fence on their, on their lot? And then compare that to the rest of Maryland, where the people to access ratio is going to be dramatically different because of the, the density. Thank you.
James Owen, you have three minutes.
All right. Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thanks. Just one comment and then one question. If you look at the original design, the Maryland design, the, that P L C, that P L C Communities communicated before, there were, and it's actually in your, on your website, there are two multifamily areas in Maryland. One of them was intended to be detached single-family, and one was intended to be attached single-family. The area that we're talking about was designed to be detached single-family. And somehow, that's just gone haywire here, and I don't know why. So that's one thing. And then the other is that, this question was asked, but it wasn't answered. What was the total square footage before, and what's the total square footage now? Thank you.
Suzanne Newhouse, you have three minutes.
Thank you very much. I have a few questions, I guess. Kind of following up on what James mentioned. I've noticed that there are a number of four- and three-bedroom units. I'm kind of wondering what the occupancy is in total now versus what it was before. One of my greatest concerns is the mix now does not include any one-story homes, which was part of the original plan. It was, you know, to be, and I, I can't recall what the actual numbers were, but a number of single-story attached duplexes with detached two-story homes. And the, the views from the neighborhood feels to me just to, to be a dramatic major change from, you know, one-story and two-story mix to entirely two-stories. I also have some concerns about parking. It, it seems to me that we have a lot of three-bedroom homes with two-car garages and very short driveways. And based on our neighborhood as it is and knowing people, a two-car, a three-bedroom home with a two-car garage tends to have one car parked in it, and one car parked in the driveway. We don't have any street parking allowed in Palm Springs or in our community. I'm kind of curious where people are going to park that car that cannot make it into their own garage. Are they going to be parking in this guest parking permanently? What about the rest of us? What if I want to buy a third car and park it in that area? What's to stop people from kind of permanently parking in that guest parking area? I think, and, and then the concern between the 15-foot setback and the 10-foot setback has been expressed here. I'll jump onto that as well. And I think that concludes my concerns for the moment. Thank you.
Madam Chair, we have no other speakers.
Thank you. Is, is the applicant here? You have a three-minute rebuttal to the comments, if you would like to take that.
Okay. I'm sure we'd have taken a few better notes here. But I do want to talk a little bit about the last one, the parking. You know, I did mention that we have 50 extra parking than required. But basically, the, the code asks for a certain number of parking per bedroom. And so the required parking does include provisions for, you know, the extra cars that would come with somebody occupying that extra bedroom. So not only do we have that, we have the additional 50 spaces that, that we are providing. Secondly, the HOA will be the kind of determinant of, you know, that parking and guiding that. And in many HOAs, they, they implement parking programs, permit programs, to stop those problems, such as the Ms. was talking about. You know, if somebody who were, who lived in the single-family decided to come and park into, in the multifamily side, what would it really happen? Is that they would get towed, because, you know, they're, they're utilizing a space that, you know, is really not allocated to, to them. You know, they have garages, they have driveways as well that should fit the four, a minimum of four cars. And so for somebody not to use their garage, that's an HOA issue, and that will be an HOA issue continually. As it relates to access, there's, there's two, you know, kind of pluses, or there's one big plus and minus to that. The surrounding open space has got, is a little bit lower because it's, it's designed to be retention as well as, you know, the kind of aesthetic trees and the, the walking space. But it, it's down low for water retention and some other things. But that means that the residential on both sides of it are a little bit higher. So the more we add access points, the more you potentially have to put in a staircase to access down the slope in there. And in the worst cases on our site, on this multifamily site, there's a seven-foot differential. And so you're talking about a 10-to-15 riser staircase, concrete staircase, that would have to be implemented. If you were to put 12 of those around the site, that wouldn't exactly be sightly. So a couple of just, you know, sight issues. But we're happy to look at, there's definitely, you know, the space, you know, to put in some extra access points between the houses. If we need to, you know, look at that as adding a provision, we don't really have a problem with that. So. But we would, because of that issue, we'd like to limit that. Finally, you know, there, I think that there's a big concern about the double-story I'd mentioned. You know, we have taken provisions. It's allowable in terms of, you know, the building height being 24 feet. The, what is it? The, the gallery homes that are two-story that are built across the street are much, much more massive and higher than ours, or would be. So I, I don't think that, you know, this is really any different than what's happening out there. So if there's any other questions, I can answer those.
Questions for the applicant in the public hearing? Starting from the far end, Commissioner Murphy.
What would happen to your plan if you had to let go of the 15-foot versus 10-foot separation?
We would lose units, and it would make our project unviable.
Thank you.
Commissioner Rotten.
Yeah. Are you familiar with what was originally approved in terms of the unit sizes and square footages?
Partially, yes.
Can you tell me about that?
Okay. I know, I know the original plan had both duplexes and a, a single, you know, a single-unit property, you know, adjacent. And it was spread out according to how it fit throughout the property. But the, the square footages, I think, were a little bit smaller, much smaller, at, I want to say around 1,500, 1,800 square feet. We are proposing much larger square footages, and it's because of the second story. So we have, we start at 1,940 square feet, and we go up to 2,475 square feet. And that's really the bulk of the second story. You know, the advantage that we're trying to do here is that we really see the, the advantage of putting the, the primary bedroom on the first floor. That's a lot of what makes up, you know, the, the first floor and why there's not necessarily additional room for secondary bedrooms. So what ends up happening is the secondary bedrooms move up onto that second floor.
And there's a couple of locations on the interior units where it looks, can we pull up a site plan, a proposed, amended? So if you're looking toward the north and you go to, say, between where you have it just kind of as a block versus one that's articulated, the floor plan? And you've got, and I think it's a back-to-back.
It's just a layer, layering situation that occurred there.
Well, I think what it is, is you've got a back-to-back of unit type one and to. Well, I think what it is, is you've got a back-to-back of unit type one and to unit type one, and you've got your primary bedrooms that in the sort of closest to the rear setback line. What is that distance? Because it looks like it's about five feet between the the building wall and the fence. So you have ten feet between bedrooms.
Point out where you're speaking.
Yeah, sure.
Right in here. Some that are the worst case, but you see there's a gate right here, which means it's about five feet between.
Oh, sorry, thank you. There's a gate right here, which is probably three or four feet wide, which means that little yard space is about five feet. So it means there you've got primary bedroom window to primary bedroom window, and it's ten feet apart. Am I correct in that?
You are correct. That those, there is a, that's the ten-foot building to building separation. And what we've done is we've alternated the elevation styles so that that style will have kind of differences in where those windows are, so you don't end up with window to window. You know, in addition, you're going to have a five-foot block wall separating those as well.
Okay. A couple of other questions. You mentioned that the your four-unit increase is going to impact the total number of approved. And so I'm assuming that other site has not been developed. And so that that site, as it comes before us at some future date, will be coming in with four units less.
Correct.
And has that been sort of run through whoever that developer may be, that that's appropriate?
So it's my understanding there isn't a developer there yet. And usually when we get a site and there's a constraint like that, that's, we work towards that constraint, you know, from the beginning. And that's, that's kind of how that works. And whoever first gets in there first ends up getting to take a little more advantage of it, so.
Let me see here, I had a couple. So along the, your Paseo, that is all open space, there's no fencing between the building and the Paseo, so it's just completely wide open?
Correct. If I'm understanding you correctly, there are, you'll see the the side yards of some of the buildings, you know, end up facing that Paseo, and there's that wall on the side yard, but offset from the house. But the whole Paseo from, from north to south is wide open.
And it's on average forty feet?
Yes.
And then, so this is, I'm kind of going into an area that is probably more for architectural review, but my reaction to the proposed change for all the units that are on the perimeter is that from your rendering and from what I can imagine it looking like, it creates kind of a canyon view, particularly because all the second floors are front-loaded. And I think, you know, and again, this may be not the appropriate time, but I think if you rethink that and so that it's not all front-loaded, it will help that streetscape tremendously. So, thank you.
Understood, and that's actually something we we knew that is going to be working through on architectural review. So there is the ability to shift that back and forth and make that the best we can, so.
Commissioner Miller.
Yeah, just got maybe one or two left from the other commission questions. The developer mentioned the willingness to look at potential other access points into the open space, and I appreciate that. One question regarding that, the Paseo coming down in the previously approved plan continued southward and essentially lined up with the Paseo was a major access point into the Olive Grove open space, and that's missing now in this plan, and instead it's been moved to the to the east. It makes sense, I think, to kind of keep that alignment for open space connection into the Olive Grove, so that may be one area where that should return, I think, to to the plan. Because the individual units facing the Olive Grove all have gates, I'm a little bit less concerned with the reduction. But I appreciate the fact that you can look at potential other spots, and we may, if we get to a vote, we'll be conditioning that perhaps. With that, I think all my questions have been answered.
If there's seven feet down and every unit has a gate, is there a seven-foot drop for every unit?
It would be a slope down into the kind of the open space.
So you couldn't walk out of the backyard into the open space?
It'll be a similar condition that the single family have, so, but in some cases it might be potentially treacherous.
Okay, that's, that that is a problem. I have some very serious concerns about all two stories. The previous plan was mixed like the rest of the developments so that it didn't create a monolith. And I know, as I'm looking at this, and part of the delight of the previous plan, it was one thousand one hundred and twenty-five to one thousand one seventy-six for the detached units, and one thousand oh eight and one thousand eight fifty-three for the, sorry, for the detached units, and the others were duplexes. These are significantly bigger, so it looks to me like what you're building is detached single-family homes with three and four bedrooms. And is that your market?
Absolutely is. And really, that stems from, you know, as the market has become more expensive, if you look at the single-family homes out there, you know, the cheapest house you can get out there is well over a million dollars into that one-point-two, one-point-three range. And as we were developing this product and looking at what the demand and what the market was going to ask out here, we felt that we needed that three- and four-bedroom ability to do that, so.
I have, I have concerns about this, but I'll close the public hearing if there are no more questions, and then we can have a, we'll have a discussion. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
It is before the commission for comments, not motions. Please, Commissioner Miller.
Yeah, I had the, the advantage of going out to the site today. I spent about an hour out there, and I'm glad I did, because I traveled around the entire site on Palladium Boulevard, and then on Taylor and Fountain and Brando and Ambassador. So I got a feel for what other access points we're cutting through from the other part, the other development that's existing. And I think it was mentioned tonight by somebody, there are very few access points from those single-family homes into the Olive Grove open space. So that's why, in part, I feel less concerned with the significant reduction in pure numbers. But again, I think the Paseo needs to line up with an open space connection, and perhaps there's a couple other spots that could easily be accommodated with more open space connections. The fact that they're asking for an additional four units, it amounts to two-point-six percent difference in density, and I don't have a problem with that. That seems like a reasonable number to be considered a minor amendment, so I don't have an issue with that. And I think the additional squeezing of the units to the outer and to have less space in between from fifteen down to ten feet has been explained by the fact that the units have gotten larger, the streets have gotten larger by virtue of a requirement for safety and access. The fact that there are wide Olive Grove open spaces on the entire east, essentially the entire west, except for right at Palladium Boulevard and in the southwest corner, for me, lessens the concern about the number of two-story units and the actual closeness of the units going from ten feet apart to, I'm sorry, fifteen feet apart to ten feet apart. So again, I believe the more than hundred-foot-wide Olive Grove around those, you know, sixty or seventy percent of the site, sort of mitigates the concern that otherwise might be there. I think the concern still remains for those units directly fronting Palladium, or that back up to Palladium essentially. It looks like there's about ten units or so.
I don't know where Palladium is, because it's not.
Palladium's on the north side, that's borders the north side of the site. And that's really the only place where this development directly abuts a street where there is existing single-family homes on the north side of Palladium. So that, to me, is the area where I would have the most concern and where perhaps some of those those units need to be dropped down to one story or provided with a different articulation such that there was more, more differentiation in the heights of the units there along Palladium. So with that, I think that addresses my major concerns and overall kind of sort of appreciation for the changes.
Commissioner Rotman.
I think the original plan has an elegance about it. It's more of a garden-style development, and I think we're, with the amended plan, we're losing that garden-style effect. And by garden-style, I mean that there's a stronger connection between the units and open space, and whether they are perforations or openings to the Olive Groves around, or just a better sense of landscaping within the development. And I think that's missing from this amended site plan. I have, as I mentioned during my questions, I have concerns about the experience as you drive around the main driveway with all the two-story units on the perimeter. I think, you know, having gone through Maryland and several other developments that are as dense as this, I think the landscaping is never, never quite grows tall enough or big enough because there's not enough space to really enhance the street experience. And I don't think that with this perimeter, the way these units are oriented on the perimeter is going to enable that to happen either. I think maybe there's some sort of hybrid available where you could do some units that are, you, you have some fingers that go out into along the perimeter versus, and then you have the, similar to what you're doing to the interior, and then you have some units that have a backyard to the Olive Groves. I like the fact that there's a community area and pool added. I think that's a real positive. I agree with Member Miller's comments about continuing the Paseo to the outer edge of the Olive Grove. And let me see what else I have. And then I do have concerns with the reduction from fifteen feet to five, I'm sorry, from fifteen feet to ten feet, not so much on the between duplexes on the side yards, but in the rear yards with the few, a few occasions that I pointed out, having ten feet between bedroom windows, or whether they're offset or not, I think that really is a deal-breaker. I think you really need more space in a backyard between units. So those are my comments.
Commissioner Murphy, do you have comments?
I do. I'm much more close to where you are. I think the original plan was elegant. A lot of time was spent on it. I can understand that there may be some changes. I'm actually, I'm, I would express some displeasure with staff in bringing us something without streetscapes and without streetscapes facing the existing residences across, I, I want to see what it looks like on the, on the edges as well as the interiors, and we've never approved anything in Maryland without drawn-out streetscapes, and I want to see it on the streets. I want to know what the exterior looks like. I agree with Commissioner Miller about Palladium. We spent a lot of time working on Palladium to make sure it looked good. I'm not going to be able to vote for this tonight. And so I'm just, I'm just saying, it's not, it isn't, it isn't good enough, and we don't have to because we have an approved plan. I want, if they want to bring something back to us, that, I mean, I can understand the change in the streets. I wouldn't agree with the change in the fifteen feet, especially bedrooms to bedrooms. I want to see streetscapes, and I want to keep some of the elegance that was in this plan. And I would have no problem with three additional units, but I think what they've done is they haven't added three additional units. They've, they've ballooned the existing units in the previous plan and increased them and then added so that the, there's a lot of additional volume without spacing and without elegance. So basically, once, once we get there, I'm going to make a motion to reject this.
And. Just in comment, if I could. I hear you, and I can count on my fingers, we only have four members here. I'm wondering if it makes sense to offer to the applicant a deferral, a continuance, such that they can, number one, I think would be good to meet with some of the surrounding neighbors, which hasn't been done, but to also give them an opportunity, give the developer an opportunity to address some of the concerns that have been made, such that they don't get faced with a denial that might complicate matters coming forward. That was just a thought, and I was hoping that the developer was going to chime in on that idea, or perhaps the planning director, as to whether that makes more sense as a motion that might pass by three to two instead of failing.
Certainly, the commission can make whichever decision the commission chooses to make administratively. It is certainly easier to work with the applicant, to come back with a revised plan, than deny and have them have to go through a resubmital. You know, that's a lengthy and can be potentially costly process. So, you know, I would certainly look to the chair to see if she'd like to hear from the developer on their willingness to do that.
Oh, I am always open to hearing from the developer.
Back, and, you know, it is well received. I do need to caution that right now, with the comments that I'm hearing, the project doesn't work, and I don't think we're going to be able to move forward. My, I would ask for continuance, but like I said, if we're, if some of these requests are really implemented, it's, we're back to the drawing board all over again, so it really doesn't work. Wanted to caution that.
With that, if I could, I would make a motion to continue this to an indefinite date, to give the developer an opportunity to see if any revisions can be made in line with the comments that have been made. And I understand perhaps only some of them could be, but you also have the opportunity to have a commission with six members instead of four that may not be in your favor, but it would be an opportunity to hear from others that weren't able to make tonight's meeting as well.
Just, I'm going to speak. I, I'm very dismayed that you brought this in without discussions with your community. You have a community of homeowners. I know that you're the developer, you own the land, you have choices, you can do as you wish, but you do have people who live in that community who I believe you should have talked with before you came in. And if you do come back, I'd like you to have, to tell us that you've met with the community and bring their comments and try and work with their comments. We have, we have a plan, we worked on a great deal, that was elegant, that did work, that came from you or from your predecessor. And so we, what we have on the property is an approved plan. And this is a change, and this is a change that we take pretty seriously. and this is a change that we take pretty seriously. Shall we, do, are you making a motion?
I made the motion to continue to an indefinite date, but I did not have a second yet.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Would you call, does anybody want to comment? We call the roll.
Yeah, with the continuance, can you lay out exactly what that means? And, I mean, they will take our comments, and they will work on a revision, and then they'll come back? Is that, is that my understanding correct?
It sounds like that's the goal, and certainly we've seen it done that way in the past. It's certainly up to the developer how, you know, thoroughly they want to consider or address the comments. I think we've heard some preliminary feedback on the feasibility, potentially of, of the feedback that's been given in terms of how it's going to pencil out on their side, but yes, the idea is, especially since we picked a date uncertain or indefinite date, to give them the time to determine when they want to come back with something that responds or doesn't to your comments, and at that point, they can speak to what they've been able to change or not, and then you could make a decision at that point.
And a denial would mean what for the developer?
A denial would be, would mean that the minor modification is denied, and they would be free to resubmit a new application and start the process again, but it would mean that what is before you tonight is, is not approved.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Yes, actually, thank you. Edward has clarified, they could, of course, also appeal that to the city council, who would be able to make a decision.
Right, okay, thank you.
Can you call the roll? Generally, we start with the maker of the motion, and then the seconder, and then go through.
Thank you very much. Okay, Commissioner Miller, please?
Yes.
Commissioner Murphy?
Yes.
Commissioner Robert, Commissioner Rotman?
Yes.
And Chair Womack?
No.
The motion passes 3-1, with two absences. Meaning that the item is continued to a date uncertain, and will come back before you if and when the applicant is ready to proceed.
Okay, moving forward to Planning Commission reports, requests, and comments. Are there any? Planning Director's report?
Not much. Good to see you all. We mentioned Vanessa, who's sitting in, so I think, I sort of alluded to this earlier, that we have lost both Joanne Brugeman, who had been with us 20 years, and Terry Hints, who had been with us 20 years. Both have moved on to retirement, lucky them, and so we wish them all the very best. They had both planned to have, to attend our last Planning Commission meeting to say goodbye to all of you, but of course, we ended up having to cancel that meeting for, for a few reasons, so they send, you know, their well wishes, and, and thank you for your years of guidance and patience with them. I'm going to beg of you, patience with us as we go through this transition as well. Vanessa is wonderful, she's jumped right in, and she's been a tremendous help. We, of course, have the two positions to fill, so we're going through that process and hope to have decisions very, very soon on who will be with us permanently. But a little patience in the meantime, we're also going through some transition with our IT team, who did a tremendous job tonight, helping out with this meeting. We lost the person who would normally run these meetings, but they've stepped in very capably and kept things moving, and I think we had a relatively seamless meeting, so thank you to them. The other big update is that the city council did approve or adopt the housing element at their last meeting, after you all considered it. You know, I think some remarks were made around the frustration with the state and how they are processing these applications. Certainly, Councilmember Middleton, I think, was the most vocal on that, if any of you watched or would like to go back and watch the video. I think we at staff, staff level certainly appreciated her comments and her support in saying that we have worked very hard for four years to only have been given additional comments from HCD the next morning, that we are now working through. We think that they're relatively minor, we think we can incorporate them administratively, which we had included in the resolution that both you and city council adopted to give us that staff leeway. So, we're still hopeful that we're on track to get that approved by the end of the year, but, but we're not quite there yet. You will be seeing the other elements hopefully within the next, within the next few months, so stay tuned for that, so we can get that completely closed out. We are also hoping to get the RFP out within the next week or two for the annual zone code up, not the annual, I'm sorry, the comprehensive zone code update, which will, of course, implement all of the changes we are working through in the general plan, as well as many, many, many years of updates that we need to make to the zoning code to update it and make it more modern and current, and reflective of, you know, how development is occurring in the city today and how we want it to occur into the future. So, that will, of course, be a really big process, that we will be soliciting you all for your feedback and advice on as we roll that out. Those are the major updates that I have. Yeah, nothing else.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And with that, I will take a motion to adjourn until 5:30 on Wednesday, October 25th.
So moved.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Have a nice two weeks.